Actually, sort of just topical briefings. And we certainly appreciate everyone for being here and for, and I want to thank all of you that are presenting today as well as our staff for getting us all this information in advance, which was great to get a chance to take a look at that. So without any further ado, we actually are just going to go in order on our agenda. We're going to take a look at, we have the presentation by the Winston and Forsyth County Schools, particularly we've had a lot of supplement related Article 46 questions. And appreciate the work that's gone into that from Tommy. So if everybody you want to start, Superintendent McManus?
I'm going to start if I can, Brian. All right. Okay, you got it, I think, right? Okay. Good morning. Thank you so much for having us here this morning for your, for some time. And we're going to just be focusing today on Article 46. So it's not a general presentation update, but just specifically on Article 46. I'm going to start us out with some background slides and then bring Tommy up to get more detailed into the slides that actually are showing our financials and our numbers. And then we'll both be here for any kind of questions. So basically, we wanted to start with just some, some background data so that as we then get into the Article 46, it's understanding where we are as a system with, with some of our demographics. So you can see the, based on the pandemic, enrollment has dropped, but based on state projections for 23, 24, we are back on the rise of increasing our student enrollment. This is a little bit of our demographics of our student populations. I think this is important as part of our background to know our student demographics continue to change. Diversity has increased over time, which is awesome. That's one of the things we celebrate in our school system. But you can see the, the demographic breakdown of our students. Followed by students being served through different, through different programs. And so this is a caption, captures our students with exceptionalities, the students that are being served through our EC programs and what that data looks like over time. If you look, we had major jumps from 2015, 16 to 17, 18. And then it just continues, we're, we've kind of tapered off 19, 20 to 22, 23. But we have more students that are continuing to be tested for services and more requests from parents to continue to test students for services. So we, we believe these numbers are going to continue increasing, which then calls for additional resources to support our students.
Can I interrupt you right there on that one?
Yes, yes.
And I guess that, that issue is of course a great concern in term, obviously we're trying to search students where they are and what they need.
Yep.
But if my memory serves me right, I think the state's reimbursing it about 12 and a half percent of the students and this is running almost 14, which, which is a significant, that means basically full cost of, of, of one and a half percent of the students here are, are going to be, are going to be paid for locally, which is a big issue. And I guess I've, I've noticed in your, I mean, I think you have a very robust MTSS system, you know, program.
Yes.
Every school, support people.
Yes.
And, and part of the success of that program is obviously, I, I've done little work in some other school districts in the last 10 years. And where that's a robust, robust system doing well, it basically reduces referrals for testing.
True.
Because that's what it's designed to do. And, and it begins to, I mean, if, if I'm in your shoes.
Yep.
That concerns me that that is not being, that is, that, that, the huge resource and investment in MTSS and its principles on the regular classroom side is, is not preventing the testing piece at, at a level. I mean, I, I just don't think there are more exceptional children on trees that are just, they're just dropping in on us more every year. I think it is, it's about how they're served from day one.
True. I agree, agree that there's no substitution for a strong core program first and foremost. And when you feel confident about that, the tier two, three interventions that Dr. Martin's talking about, where if a student's not succeeding in core, their core instruction with everyone else on grade level instruction, that you need to provide adequate and, and successful interventions at tier two. And if those aren't working, you go to a tier three. And so if all that is working well, it should, it should eliminate some students that might qualify for exceptional education services. And so you wonder then back in 2017, what was that big jump? And I'm not, I mean, I don't, I would have to investigate that from 2015, 16 to 17, 18, because that was a jump of over 200 students. And then it kind of a little bit more of a jump in 19, 20, and we've actually tapered off in, in 22, 23. I'm not sure, again, what those big jumps are. A strong MTSS program is, is, is true that that should help alleviate, but at the end of the day, we also have parent, we also assess kids when parents request as well. And when the interventions are not working. And so that's, yeah. So I'll investigate why the uptick from 2015, 16 to 17, 18. I think as we look at our economically disadvantaged percentages, that has increased over time as well. And again, I think 21, 22, there was a decline in enrollment as well post pandemic, but we are, our, our numbers have continued to increase on our, our families that qualify, that are considered economically disadvantaged. If we look at our multi-language learners, we, that continues to increase. So students that come to, to, are moving in from other countries that need the services of our multi-language learner program, those numbers continue to increase as well. Yes, sir?
Pardon me, ma'am. Going back one slide, the economically disadvantaged percentages, do you know whether there were any major changes in the way that figure was calculated between 19, or 2020 and 2022?
There, I think, did, do you know that? No, were there changes to the, I know what you're asking. Did we look differently at how we're calculating? I think that at the federal level, I think with, like, like determining even Title I, I do believe there may have been something that would encompass more students. I need to check on that, Mr. Bessie, though, the exact, the exact.
During, during the time of COVID, you weren't doing free reduced percentages.
Yes, no, I'm, I'm sorry. I wasn't referring to 21, 22 to 22, 23, but 19, 20 to 22, 23. Yes, yes. And I'm not questioning whether that's an accurate read.
Right. No, you're saying did something change in the calculation?
Was it a calculation based change or was it?
Yeah.
That, that significant increase in?
I feel like going into, but this would not have impacted 22, 23. But going into next year, there were some changes to the, the way the federal calculation where you could include multiple measures. And so I need to get, that is what I need to get. But going from 21, 22 to 22, 23, no. Going this year's Title I numbers, there were some changes. So that will potentially cause a shift for what you see for next school year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Here, oh, multi-language learners, again, students that are coming to our country that are in needing of, of services or even current students that are still learning the language that are getting services. And again, this number does continue to increase. So the reason for showing those slides, I think too, is that over time, our district has had shifts in the services we need to provide. And when you need to provide more services, you need more people to provide services because we look at this as programs aren't the answer to, to many of the services. You're going to see programs, obviously you need strong curriculum, you need strong resources, you need programs, but the people that it takes to serve kids. So if you look at 21, 22 to 22, 23, so this year has not finished, but we did add many more federal, federally funded positions due to ESER. We added, as you all know, I've, I've presented on this before, but we've added counselors and we've added TAs. We added front office people that could, that are bilingual, that could communicate better with our families. We've added behavior people to schools because of the uptick in mental health supports that are needed. We added people, the behavior positions where people could go into classrooms and coach teachers. And so when you think about 22, 23, there is an uptick in numbers, but that, that will once again decline after next school year when we don't, we still don't have those ESER funds. And so ESER, you know, so as you look at this, there were increases in all three categories due to just the, the level of support our students need post pandemic. And next year is that last year where you'll see so many federal positions that we've added, that will start to taper off the year after. But our student, the needs of our students are not tapering off. The needs of our students continue to rise and we continue to want to provide the top, the, the highest level of supports for our students.
Can I ask you one other question?
Yes, yes, Dr. Martin.
On your staff piece, does that include every single position? Because you're, you're mentioning TAs, site-based substitutes, et cetera.
Yes.
So this is, this includes locally paid maintenance?
This is every.
This is everybody.
Everybody.
Everybody. I'd be real interested in the yellow part, what it breaks down, particularly in terms of teachers, locally paid.
Yep. Teachers is the highest, so the, the, in that 1,053, when we break, we can send you the breakdown, Tom, we were just looking at it the other day. Teachers were the largest category of that breakdown. And so, but we will, we will send you the exact.
Yeah, I'd be really interested in comparison between, because back in 13, 14, my memory is running probably 54,000 kids, which is more kids, and now there are 100 more people that are locally paid.
Yep.
And, and I'd certainly like to know whether those are more teachers.
They are.
Or more other folks.
Yep, they are. And we knew you would ask that question and we should have probably provided it today, but we'll send it to you because we broke it down exactly like that for our own board. We had a sheet that showed the exact positions that are paid on local and it does not show other positions. It shows more teachers, the largest number of that 1,053 were teachers. There were some student services personnel on that. There were some administrators that are site-based on that. There were, again, other people that are supporting students. And so I think as our needs arise even post pandemic, it's, it's extremely difficult when you look at flat numbers and you look at needs. And so like flat numbers in 2013, 14 would show that you could probably do it with less people. As our students' needs have become elevated and post pandemic, where there have been even greater needs than I've ever seen in 33 years and that my colleagues across the country have seen, you're going to need more people to, to front load and get kids on track. And then we can start tapering off, even though I'm sure our school personnel would like, not like to hear me say that. The other thing you can see in 22, 23 that I did last year, and, and I cannot continue this, but I did it because of need of our staffs and this, and from our schools is our formula for allotments are flat, basic, this is what you get. If there was a 1.7 that was allocated for a school for arts and I could round up to a 2.0, but make sure that they could actually add more arts classes so more students could take advantage, I did that. And that is a little bit over the formula for one year so that I could actually make sure that our students were getting more services. And that was based on feedback from our teachers as well, because some of our formulas are extremely, are extremely tight and they, they make it to where some people are sharing three schools. The feedback from our folks is if we are going to build relations with students and I'm traveling to three schools and I'm trying to have an effective band program or chorus program, that that is very, that's very problematic. So we haven't changed the formulas. Last year, because of ESER and other, like, I was able to actually just bump up some of those that were close to a full, a full allotment. This year, we've had to go back knowing that our budget, we, we cannot, we can't keep doing that or without getting additional funding from the state, if that makes sense.
Great, thank you.
So then when you look at this, and, and here is where we're very appreciative. I understand that we are still not, you know, outperforming Wake and Durham and, and Charlotte, who have just a, a higher tax base. But I want to thank our county commissioners because of our supplement and Article 46. I mean, we are ahead of Union, Guilford, who is the, the county that is right next door that is probably the easiest for people to get to. But because of what our county has provided us, we, we are higher in our supplement, our average supplement. And this does not include new teachers. I think we're about between eighth and 10th on the average supplement. For new teachers, we're even better. I think we're second, between second and fourth. I can't remember exactly because we, we gave new teachers more a couple of years back. But the average teacher supplement, we are outperforming, and this is the group of, of districts that we usually use for comparative purposes. As far as the, the smaller districts that are on the outskirts, we, we are higher than all of those. But as far as the larger districts, this is where we fall with our supplement comparison. And now I'm going to bring Tommy up to actually get into the actual dollars and figures. And I'll be here at the end too for any questions.
So this is off of the, our state report. And you can see the, the number of teaching positions and that's without regard to their funding source as the positions, the teachers receiving the supplement, and then it's a mathematical computation based off of the state on what our average. You can see in 19, you know, we were at 4,200, we grew slightly in 20. And then as Article 46 came in, our supplement average went from the $4,300 to $5,600. And then it was running in FY '22 to the $5,800 mark. Then in looking at, and so when we had the discussion previously, you're correct in that based off of everything I've read, off of everybody's intent, when the funds are collected from y'all in Article 46, it is restricted to the supplement. So as such, it's part of the general fund, but not in the sense that you can use it for any purpose. It's restricted. So in looking at that and taking everything, the first, you know, you see the fiscal years, the total supplements paid, that includes the retirement, that also includes the, the FICA, the growth that occurred from one year to the next. Then the Article 46 is based off of what the district has received, because we book our revenue on receipts, receive, not on accrual. What was paid out, and then in the Article 46, it says, okay, if the supplement is $30,200, that's what we're going to pay out, we look at the base that y'all established, the baseline of 19.7 million dollars. And then what's left, it's needed to be filled by Article 46. And in year one, it left a 600, at the end of the year, about a $610,000 carryout. In year two, you see it increases. The increase that occurs is basically twofold. One, there is a step on part of the supplements. And number two is the change in the retirement rates. Those are your significant changes. In that second year, part of what we actually earned and what the, we saw, we should have been booked in 21, but we received it after because of just the timing and when everything gets reconciled and tied out. We do the same calculation with the baseline number, wouldn't be as needed from Article 46. It left in 2022 fiscal year, $4.8 million that based off of what we're going to propose today, should have been set up as part of fund balance, but in a restricted category. Okay? So if you look at the audited statement right now, you'll see there's $20 million of fund balance the district has. Of that, $16 million is unrestricted. This 4.8 would have been a reduction of the $16 million number. So from an accounting perspective, you would have said fund balance restricted of 4.8, lowering the $16 million down to, what's that, $15.2 million, if I did my math right.
Aren't you subtracting that from the, from the six, you're reserving, you're reserving 4 billion, subtracting from the 16 down to roughly 12, 12 some odd million.
Yeah, I was thinking of the 20. But the 20 is total and part of that's restricted by state law. Then in year three, which we're in, where that's an estimate, the actual will be the actual that will pay out. Okay? Depending on who in my staff you talk to, we all have a different estimate. All right? But if it comes in at 47 million, you see the payment flow and it would work out that at the end of the year, we were slightly above the baseline. The district would have to cover that. And that'll come out of our year-end funds as you reconcile your budget to actuals and getting ready to close out your books. That number will be absorbed as part of the year-end funds side of the world, which says that basically we're reaching a point that there will be a cap, that the, the supplement's not going to continue to grow and grow and grow and grow unless you got funding for it. We're reaching a point that now we'll have a cap in what we're going to be able to pay out based off of the, and the amount will be based off of the, the population of the employees because of that step component. If we go more toward the teachers, you'll have room to grow. You get more on the back end, it's going to cap you out.
I still probably don't understand that last part. I'll think a little bit more about it.
Okay.
I, I do have a simple question first, and that is the baseline amount of 19, 798. Where, where did you say that, we, where did that come from?
I'll give you a copy in my file at the office. That was a number that got discussed. And if I recall, it came out of a document of, from y'all, from the county during our discussion, that the baseline was going to be established at the 19, 798. And I'll provide y'all what a copy of that.
Because I could almost make it, I mean, you can make some arguments that, I mean, because this is.
Which number would you use?
Plus benefits, plus social security. I could argue that, that it looks like in, in FY '20.
Right.
It looks like that the, the district made a decision, which I don't recall, that's a pretty big lick, I mean, that was a pretty big increase.
Correct.
10% in supplement that was locally put into it is what it appears to be.
Correct.
And, and, and of course, I could argue that that would lock in, that would be the baseline because that was, that was, that was the year before. And I'm not, I'm not sure what the, I'm not sure where the, I'd love to see that.
I'll show you. I was using in my calculations initially the 23 million.
The baseline.
Because that would have been my baseline.
You let Kyle, yeah.
And so, and we actually do have it, we show it in our budget ordinance in section 15 of our budget ordinance, where we said the baseline would be 19,798, 498, which was the amount paid in FY '20, not including the $3.6 million.
Not, wait a minute, not including?
The front, that was the front amount.
Well, in, in FY '20, we had increased the property tax rate by one penny and that went towards supplements. And so we, we backed that out of, of the total number to set the baseline.
Don't you remember y'all, y'all?
I do remember, I do remember this, I remember this cent increase. And I remember that we promised that if the Article 46 passed, we would reduce it by a cent, which we did.
That's right.
And so you made an adjustment with the, from the one cent increase.
Correct. We, we tried to institutionalize that number in the ordinance that year. And so that is the number and unless the board policy changes around it, that was sort of the guidance and.
It's good.
We needed a fixed baseline and we did, so. sort of the guidance and we needed a fixed baseline, and we did, so.
I got, well, it was, that ended up being generous, that was good.
And I appreciate that.
No, that's good.
It was generous on purpose back then, by the way.
I got it, I got it. The, the, the other, I mean, the other side, if if these projections in FY '23 occur, I mean, your, your reserve is now in the, in the, in the negative by 1.9 million. So, which means that.
It'll go to zero.
And I'm, but I'm, but I probably don't think it's going to happen. But the other side, if it did, I mean, then that's, I don't, and I don't see how that can happen, because your, your actual schedule of supplements for article, you know, for the Article 46 amount has not changed. And I know you've got a lot of people who have been retiring, and I know you're not, if you looked at, if you looked at the age of your staff every year, my guess is, it's beginning to decline and getting lower. I mean, the average age, simply because a lot of people retiring and a little, a lot of young folks coming in, and there's a churn at the bottom with with that, and I would think that your staff is getting a little younger. And if a younger staff on a supplement schedule that is loaded on experience, seems to me that your demands actually get less unless the schedule changes. Now, it, as we were talking just briefly before we came up, the retirement percentage benefits have gone up. And as you said, they compound.
Right.
So probably in FY '20, they were probably around 19%, and they're about 23 or something percent now.
24 and a half, 24.5.
So, so, and that, and that compounds some increase over time, which is a pretty, pretty big, pretty big increase, but it still doesn't seem like it, it seems like part of that would balance with the age of your staff.
I'll look at, yeah, I'll do an analysis with everything going on with budgets, and so I haven't done that, but we can, I can do that kind of analysis when we can look at it.
And, but the other side of it, if you really end up this way, you got 1.9 million that that essentially your general fund or your fund balance is going to subsidize. And then in that case, if you, unless you want that to keep getting worse, then you're going to have to actually make an adjustment in your supplement schedule for next year.
Potentially, yes, sir.
I mean, that, I mean, it seems to me that will, unless you want to keep subsidizing it with fund balance over time.
No, sir. So, but you're right, and that's, we will look at what that, we would have to do the aging to calculate what the cap, you know, proposed cap would be for our board to consider.
Yeah, well, I hope it didn't turn out quite like this, but, but, but that's, but anyway, but it is helpful to get it, and I, and I think you're, keep going, because you're going to talk about your process.
No, sir.
Got it.
All right, so our plan of action, as we talked about, when the dollars come in, we record that in a restricted revenue account. The baseline gets paid out first. Okay, so the district goes out. Monthly, no later than quarterly, a reconciliation is done of it. On a quarterly basis, we present that to the school board and give you a copy at, after the school board presentation of the report. That way, everybody has all the same numbers, and hopefully then it flows and it answers any and all questions you may have.
Any other questions for Tommy? Thank you, it's been very helpful. Thank you.
Yes, this is not in your presentation, but it, it'll help my understanding. When I was with the city, there was substantial weather-related contingency every year. Does the school system have any significant weather-related contingency possibilities during the school year?
In the budget that I've just did, which being my first one, there is no real, you know, the, the, the calculation, the way it's done, it kind of assumes that your, your days, including any weather contingency, is kind of the same from year to year. So Dan, the way I'm hearing your question, I would say, no, sir, it does not.
All right, thank you.
I think the weather consideration at most is in utilities. I mean, if you, if you're making some, and that's nothing but a guess, and I'm talking about you're going to pay more when it's, stays zero for about a week.
Well, but the other one, I guess you could get into is if you have an extension and you got to go extra days to make up and you paid on the front end, that could be a contingency.
But usually, we don't have the expense when the, when the school is closed. I mean, it's, it's not like going out buying, the city buying sold. This is, this is trucks for the, for the roads, a little, little different.
Yeah, I was having a difficult time projecting without more familiarity with the school system's detailed budget, what that might be if there was a weather-related contingency. And I thought, am I missing something?
There's not, the one you're going to see in May, no, sir, there's not. Okay. All right, thank y'all.
Thanks. Any other questions?
I wanted to recognize, I didn't see well, I was standing up here, that one of our board members is here, so thank you. Our vice chair, Alex Bohannon, is in the audience. I didn't notice that when I was, when my back was to the room, so thank you for being here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The second item, we're pleased to have Dr. Janet Spriggs, our community college president. I know she has several staff with her for her quarterly report, and thank you for being here.
Absolutely, thank you so much, and I'm going to attempt to figure this out, but I might need help. Ashley, I'm so sorry. I think I can end show, is that right? And then share behind me. And then I put it in slideshow. Well, here we go. Okay, good morning, everyone. Thank you for bearing with me and my technical skills, or lack thereof, this morning. It's always a pleasure to be before the commission, and I have a few reports that I want to share with you today about our ongoing construction capital projects that are funded with county funds. And also, it is the end of the year, which means, or end of our academic year, I should say, which means that we are in full force celebrating amazing accomplishments of some pretty amazing students, and I have a few reports to tell you about there. Starting with the capital improvements, I have photos here from the renovation of the Robert L. Strickland Building. As you all know, this is our largest building on campus, and we had roughly 79,000 to 80,000 square feet in the building that had never been upfitted. And thanks to county bond dollars, we are able now to complete that upfitting. We have approximately 15% of the work completed at this point. The entire project has been separated into 15 different areas of construction, which allow us to do some of the smaller projects without going through state construction, and then to have the, have the everything in the project phased so that we can open up the most important areas more quickly. The first area that we are working to complete is the student services, career counseling, testing, and then the reconfigured lobby entrance of our Strickland Building. And those are scheduled to be completed late summer or early fall of this year. Very excited about that work, because it allows us to co-locate all of the services that new and continuing students might need to be able to either enroll and register for classes or stay enrolled and get the support that they need. So currently on schedule and on budget, which is always a wonderful thing, and approximately four months left in that first project. I don't have pictures yet, because we haven't started the actual construction at the transportation campus, but at our transportation campus, we do have Walter Robbs Architecture completing the design development phase with state construction. As you all know, even though it is county funds, community colleges are required to run projects that are over one and a half or $2 million through state construction. So we are waiting for that word back from the state that they have approved our design. And we do expect that any day. It says the final state design submission of our CD is estimated for May and June, once we get feedback on this initial phase. And then there's about a 60-day state review period. So we are continuing to believe that we can start construction on this in early fall, and it's about a 15-month construction period. And then finally, the last project that is, we've just completed, initial placement of where the building will be located, is our Learning Commons. It's a $23 million project, and it is going to put us into space that is technologically advanced and able to meet the needs of our students and give them the technological resources that they need in a library. We're really calling this our 21st century library experience. We have made a final building placement. Our architect is Morris Berg, and I want to make sure I say this correctly, because there's so many dates. The final building profile and style has been narrowed down to one selection. So we are in the process of getting a model for that, submit it back to Forsyth Tech, and we'll have that from our architect by May 16, which is just a couple of weeks away. The preliminary design and programming are expected to be complete in early summer, and we're working through our contractor selection. This is going to be a CM@Risk project, so we're working through that process now. I think we've narrowed it down to two, and we're working to finalize that. I will move forward, but please stop me if you have any questions, and I'll have time at the end as well. Moving on to talk about some of our amazing students, you see several of them here. We were very happy to be able to participate again this year in Community College Advocacy Day in Raleigh, that was on March 29. I had four students, three board members, and several staff members that went with us, as, as well as all of the 57 other great, of the great 58 community colleges in North Carolina. And we were there to talk about our state budget priorities and have our students be exposed to what it's like in the halls of government. It was a wonderful day. We had one student who was offered an internship with Senator Joyce Kravik, and we had several other students that were offered recommendation letters for college, and they just had an absolutely wonderful day, as you can see from the smiles here in these photos. The next slide that I have for you is, we have also hosted Boom Super Sonic at our Maisy S. Woodruff Aviation Technology Center. We worked with Representative Jeff Zinger and his team. They have been in contact with the Boom executives. We had already been working very closely with Boom throughout, since they made their announcement, because they had reached out indicating that they would need more qualified AMP technicians than what they were going to be able to get with just Guilford Tech. So Forsyth Tech and Guilford Tech are working hand in hand to make sure that we can meet the needs, quite frankly, of Boom, but also all of the other, no pun intended, booming aviation businesses in the Piedmont Triad region. So very excited to have them there and to show off this wonderful facility that you all helped us with, with bond dollars. So thank you again for that investment in your community college. These are students from the Phi Theta Kappa Conference. Phi Theta Kappa is our national or international honor society. We have a thriving chapter at Forsyth Tech, and we had students who, the list is much too long for me to read to you, but if you did receive our PowerPoint, there are notes in the PowerPoint, and it shows you all of the students and the, the awards that they won at both the regional level, and then in a few moments, you'll see another picture of them at the national level. They won things like outstanding participation, regional distinguished chapter awards, as well as being at the national level, one of the best and most distinguished chapters in, out of the 1,300 nationally. We were in the top 100 out of 1,300. So very proud of those students who generally have GPAs around 4.0 while they are still working, many of them, and they're all age groups in that list. So very proud of those students. Also, our math club, and, you know, math is a subject that a lot of folks want to shy away from, and sometimes we have to really work hard to convince students to take it earlier rather than later. But our math students are doing extremely well. You can see here that we had students who participated in the Stanford Math Tournament. We had students who participated in the AMTYC, and I apologize, but that's the American Something, Association of Something. But it basically is a math institute. And we did have, I now know that we had seven students who placed first place, and we had another three who were second place. And then finally, I'm very thrilled to announce that Han Lin, who was one of our early college students, has been accepted to study at the prestigious North Carolina School of Science and Mathematics. So very proud of Han and the work that she has done. I'll also add that our math work at the college, we have redesigned the way that we teach math. We've put it into an eight-week format, and it is now being used as a model for the state. We are actually going to be working with our system office to tell them the work that we have done, because our results have been so amazing. We have much higher pass rates than average on some of the key math classes. And so just this week, I signed a document allowing some of our faculty to help teach the rest of the state some of the good things that we've learned about teaching math. And then finally, our N4C SGA, we have student government associations at every college, but we also have a statewide North Carolina comprehensive SGA. We have officers who serve at the state level, and this year, we had two award winners at the state level. Two out of the four awards that they gave came to our students. First of all, Ranuka Katre, who is with the glasses in this picture, won the Dr. Michael Taylor Servant Leadership Award. I will also mention that Ranuka is our SGA president, and this past weekend, she interviewed as a finalist for the Goodnight Scholar, or Goodnight Scholarship at NC State University. So we're waiting with bated breath to see how she did, and I have a feeling she's going to make it. She's really amazing. Also, Destiny Perez, who is the other female in this picture, won two awards at that conference, the Brian Pugh Award and the Darrell Mitchell Award for Outstanding Student in the Western Division. And we're very proud of Destiny. She graduated high school at age 16 and is finishing with us now in May. This was just last year, if I'm not mistaken, that she graduated from high school. She's going to graduate with us in May, and I think she's headed to Western Carolina University. So we're very happy and proud of Destiny. Oops, I went the wrong way, my apologies. And then these are just additional pictures from the Phi Theta Kappa National Conference, where again, we did very well and had many individual as well as chapter awards. I also wanted to share that we are very excited about a new grant that we have received, the National Center for Biotechnology Workforce, which is at Innovation Porter at the, our campus that is co-located with Greater Winston-Salem Inc. We're going to get about $80,000, and what we're going to do with that is train college administrators from across the country. It's three and a half days, and they're going to be learning from us emerging technology around biomedical and biotechnology. So thrilled to be bringing those folks here for that three and a half days and excited about this NSF grant. And finally, I want to invite you all, I think I invited you last time, but since it's closer now, I'll remind you that we are celebrating, our big celebration for the year is coming up on May 10 at 5:00 PM at the Lawrence Joel Veterans Memorial Coliseum. It's our commencement. We would love to have you join us. We have special seating, and we'll do our best to get you in more quickly and through the line and seat it in advance, and we would love to have you in attendance. And I will close by offering questions, and also, one other thing. I have lots of my team members with me here today. I have our vice president, Chief Officer for Economic Mobility and Workforce Outcomes, our vice president, and that's Alan Murdock. Jennifer Coulum is here, she's our vice president for Workforce Outcomes and Process Improvement. And Danielle Rose, who is a director for our work-based learning and apprenticeship programs, along with Chief Officer Paula Dibley. My three colleagues on this side of the room are here in support of something later in your agenda, that I just wanted to take a moment to share that I'm aware of an upcoming ask that we are going to be making with you and in partnership with the county around LEAP at Forsyth Tech. And I think many of you were with us back in 2019 when we started our Learn and Earn Apprenticeship Program. We currently have 50 students this semester, almost 50, I think it's 48, students in a variety of apprenticeship programs. And we've been very grateful for support from Duke Energy and Apprenticeship North Carolina to help us fund tuition and books for those apprentices. That money is sort of running out now. We've had a lot of use of that funding, and we've applied for additional funding that we do expect to get, but we're not sure yet, and we still have this need. And so we're making an ask, I think it's around up to $100,000, in partnership, again, with our workforce partners, primarily the county being our number one workforce partner. And so that's coming up a little bit later. I just wanted you to know, I'm very much aware of it and very grateful that you're even considering it, and would ask that, that you would, if you have any questions for me or others about that, let us know. And with that, I will conclude my report and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Dr. Spriggs, would it be possible to have those whom you've just recognized who are seated to stand and let us give them a salute, a hand, a round of applause? Would that be all right with you?
I am always happy to have my team members recognized. If you would like to stand. Thank you, Commissioner.
I, I've got, which is one short question.
Okay.
Is it your next quarterly meeting or the one in the fall where you do your strategic plan update goals? Data, data when?
We are finishing our semester in May. I think I actually said to you that I would bring it next time, but I thought next time was June. My apologies, I am on the calendar for June, I believe. We will have data in June, and we will have comprehensive data in the fall, yes. So we do have the end-of-year data that I can bring in, in June, and then we will have the, the, the bigger holistic picture from the strategic plan analysis when I come back in the fall.
Good. I appreciate, always appreciate the update. Lot, lot of good things, a lot of good kids being successful, and, and certainly glad to see those construction projects, you know, moving. those construction projects moving their way, sometimes slowly with your, you know, a little extra state oversight.
Yes.
It really helps, I know.
Yes, it does. And, you know, there's a lot of state money being spent at community colleges right now, so we're, it's kind of a backlog. They used to promise us 30 days, and now it's 60, and they take every bit of that 60, it appears. But it, yes, we are moving forward. We have a contractor for the Strickland renovation, Garanko. They're out of Stokes County, I believe, and one of their founders actually graduated from Forsyth Tech in 1975. But they are doing great work and really pushing and moving faster. They're quite ahead of schedule, actually, right now. So we're happy about that, and we will keep doing our best to manage state construction.
Other questions for Dr. Spriggs?
Thank you, Dr. Spriggs, for your presentation and update. I am very curious about the way that you all are teaching math, especially in light of the math scores that we see here locally.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not sure if there's a way for us to leverage what you all are doing to assist in the public school system, but is it a certain methodology? You all have found a different type of curriculum to teach math? So I'm just wondering what that's about.
It's really not, to my knowledge, and I am not teaching, I'm not one of the teachers, but it's not necessarily a different methodology. I think it's the way they approach the learning and the way they have built this eight-week model, and the way that, quite frankly, they provide additional tutoring support along with the instruction in the classroom. So it's really kind of an embedded tutoring model. But we have also built and redesigned our developmental education for math model so that students can get, they can actually take a college math class while they have a corequisite developmental math class, and that has made all the difference. Because one thing about students who come to the community college and need to take developmental education is that their financial aid won't pay for it, which is hard. But also, secondly, they're not gaining college credit. And so they, if we can get them an early win, if we can embed tutoring for developmental education in with an actual college credit-bearing class, they get momentum, they can use financial aid, and they move forward much faster. But I would be happy to get more information on the specifics of the pedagogy and the way they're teaching it, and also, of course, always happy to partner with others on how we can use what we're learning to help others.
Well, what I will say is that the embedded tutoring piece is probably a 20-year-old idea as it relates to, especially for students at risk.
Right.
The best time to work with them is in the moment, not after school, and all of these things that become a barrier. So I'm glad that you all are actually utilizing something that, I don't know why, we kind of got away from that in the public school system. I think we saw the scores go up, so we relaxed kind of the methodology, and because of COVID, we may have to, you know, definitely bring that back to order. But the learn and earn piece, this is my next question. So are community colleges eligible for Title III dollars?
We can be, and I don't know if we have any Title III money, though, at the current time.
Because I would think that you could pay.
Okay, yes. So we have had Strengthening Institutions Grant from Title III before. The last iteration of the grant, when they put in the grant call, did not, it wasn't available for us. We looked at the criteria, and it didn't fit. So basically, how that works is they send out the call for proposals for grants, and they have very specific criteria about what they're going to look for now. And in the past, we fit the criteria, and we've had those grants, but we do not have one right now. We do have other, like I said, we have had private industry support for apprenticeships, and we have support through North Carolina, or Apprenticeship North Carolina, which is actually now housed under the community college system. So we have found ways to fund that, but not through that particular pathway.
And this is my last question as it relates to the learn and earn. I guess, have there been any conversations with those companies that we send the students to for the apprentice, because we know that they're in need for just the manpower, and I wonder if there's a way to leverage that to kind of help support the learn and earn? I think it would be a great investment on the business side, too.
I absolutely agree, and they really are investing. So the problem that we have had is that the employer partners are actually paying the students for 40 hours of work, and they go to work for 20, and they come to school for 20. So they're already making that investment, and that's why they're not as eager to make the other investment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One question, if I may. Back to the transportation campus. Can you please remind us the programs and facilities that you're anticipating base there, and just with which ones are new, which ones are expanded room?
Right. We have, at our Transportation Center, we have a heavy diesel equipment. We have automotive, general automotive technician, and we also have and are very proud of our work with Toyota. We are the only Toyota T-10 certified educational provider in the Southeast. So we provide for all of the Southeast, and we have an apprenticeship program through Toyota as well. We have motorcycle, we have race car technology, we have auto body and collision. And essentially, the addition to that campus is allowing us to expand those programs, which could and most likely will include additional certificates and diplomas that are short-term and stackable to the degree. But it's, we don't, at this time, to my knowledge, have any plans for new programs. It's more, what we have is already going very, very well. Heavy diesel equipment particularly is out of space and also is busting at the seams with enrollment. So more space for more students for that industry is a big part of it, but all of the rest of the areas need additional space as well.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask just one thing? So the community college has been a great partner as we've dealt with labor challenge, market challenges in the county. And so maybe talk just a little bit, because they've really ramped up what they've been able to do with our EMT Academy on the public safety side, but also with the Sheriff's Department, because we know we've got, we're at sort of crisis levels around staffing. And I'll just say, because I know I do it to Janet sometimes, I am unapologetically make that her problem.
Yeah.
The recruitment for some of those positions, I say, you gotta solve this, because I mean, that's really, that is a huge avenue for people that we're trying to recruit, particularly in the public safety world.
Yeah, absolutely. Dudley loves to give me problems to solve, and then we work collaboratively to figure them out, so it's actually a very good thing. We are working, we did do great work around the EMT and EMS pipeline when that, when we had such significant shortages. We also now are working, our Dean for Public Safety Training, Conrad Walsh, has a lot of creativity. In fact, sometimes Alan and I will tell him, proceed until apprehend it, but then we're very closely watching for when we need to apprehend, because he just goes with things. And he is working on special delivery options to be able to change the way that we deliver the detention officer training, so that we would be able to have people working more quickly and even working and training at the same time. And Alan, are there any other specific things other than what we, what I'm talking about that we're doing right now?
Also creating a program for detention officers.
Right. That'll be a lower amount of time.
A lot of time, and then they can effectively be able to.
Right. And I think that's important, that Conrad does have ideas about how we structure this new shorter certificate, to be able to use as a retention tool and for ongoing development as well. We're also looking at students who are maybe in limbo. They're not really in limbo, but they're not declared into a pathway yet, or they're struggling to stay in the pathway that they're in, to see if there's a way that we could give them information. This was a very successful strategy when we were working with EMTs. We had paramedic night, and we basically partnered with county staff and other paramedics in EMS to come to the college and show the students what the program was all about, and we signed up a lot of students through that effort. So some of this work is about getting the word out on what the salaries look like and what the job opportunities look like, and finding those students who are interested and maybe not moving forward in a different direction, so that we can get them in that pipeline.
If I may, one brief follow-up on what Dudley just asked about. And this was one thing that was in my mind when you mentioned the Transportation Center, is there is a sort of broad community shortfall in bus drivers.
Yes.
The school system, the transit system. And I didn't know if there was a program underway to sort of bolster, you know, recruitment and training there, or if one was under contemplation.
Not, not to my knowledge. We haven't been approached or asked about that. However, we can certainly reach out and see if there's a way that we can connect and help with that. I think you're asking about actual bus driver training, and I do know that the school system does that. I'm not sure if they do it in-house or how they do it, but.
The DMV.
DMV, okay, okay. But certainly, we are happy to, you know, see if there's any way we can assist with that.
Yeah, and I know that both the school system and the transit systems have in-house training programs, but, you know, they're struggling.
Right, and we are happy to help if we can. So we'll make sure we reach out and see what we can do. We have strong relationships and partnerships with the school system.
Isn't it strange how sometimes you connect a vision in your mind from something that happened years ago? When you mentioned Toyota, it reminded me of Channel 12 was right on the spot. The Bankin' King was robbed, and a witness was standing by to be interviewed, and they said, "What did the getaway car look like?" And the witness said, "I can't remember what it looked like, but it was a white Toadyote." Toadyote's been part of my vocabulary for Toyota's concern for years.
Well, we have a very strong partnership with them, and we're very excited about that, because I think it can only help with the expansion they're making just down the road in North Carolina. So we're working with other colleges on how we can help them with that.
Yeah.
Thank you so very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you driving a Toadyote?
Do I? You know, I actually have one, yes. Thank you.
All right. Our third presentation is our quarterly update from Partners Behavioral Health, and we have Jackie Copeland here today. I appreciate his work. I serve on that board, and a lot of challenges at the moment, and I appreciate all that they're doing. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for your service. Dr. Martin on our board, again, here to give you a quarterly update of what we're doing as your member care organization to meet the needs of residents of Forsyth County. First want to talk about, because what we do is all about our members, and give you a few of the numbers of members we've served. Looking at the third quarter of this fiscal year, the period of January to March 31st, we served a little shy of a little over 2,900 folks, Medicaid members. Again, we had two populations we served, Medicaid, along with state-funded. With that, we look at our penetration rate, and as I mentioned, in past, that's the rate of people who want to get services, we get those into services. We're at 26.9% for this quarter that we're looking at here. That's a slight increase from last time I reported, almost just a one-point percentage point increase, so not a big increase there. We're trying to focus on that, look at ways we can continue to increase that number.
Could I interrupt you?
Yes, sir.
Could you give a rough number for the state? Because I, I always, this statistic I was not familiar with till I got on that board, and it's, and clearly, because a lot of people would say, well, 26.9 doesn't sound very many. So can you give them a little idea of sort of what the state rate is for that?
Yeah. The state rate, if we're not mistaken, is somewhere, it's in the teens. I want to say 18, 17 to 19. One thing about Partners is we have really worked hard at this piece to be one of the leaders. There's several data points that the state of North Carolina looks at, the Department of Health and Human Services, and they give ongoing reports of how we stack up with the other five LME, MCOs. We typically are, in most of those categories, are either lead the state or number two in the state. We kind of battle with the nearby LME, which would go unnamed, and our competition during service. So yeah, so it does seem like a low amount, but you, it is a significant number, just because of the folks' behavioral health needs. There are a lot of other challenges that they face, social determinants of health that deal with economics, transportation, youth security, crime, housing, and so for behavioral health folks, like we see on the physical health side, it's, we want to make sure when they're ready, because folks who are challenged with behavioral health issues, when they're ready, we need to be able to respond. We try to respond as quickly as possible, because that motivation for change can change. Thank you for that, Dr. Martin. On the state-funded side, we served a little over 2,900 individuals. Also, these are folks who, for all intensive purposes, are, don't have, do not have another source of insurance. They don't qualify for Medicaid. A lot of these are folks who are working poor and others who, if they're state-funded for, that they qualify categories they fit into, we manage that and try to provide them services. Very limited dollars here. The state has, over the years, decreased that state funding amount significantly, but we try our best to find creative ways to try to meet their needs. Next, want to talk about something I know that question, that the Commissioners ask is, okay, Jackie, we hear about the people, the numbers you got there, how are those people, how are those people going and getting into services and sticking with it? So I think I shared the last report with you, our initiation and engagement. Initiation essentially is, there's an industry standard that says if a person can, once they say they want service, if they can get two or more services in the first 14 days, it increases them, continue on with services. So I have that number here for you. On the mental health side, Forsyth County, 24.55%. That's a slight increase, again, not right on two percentage points. Substance use, it's at, you see, 41.12%, and that's roughly compared to the last quarter, almost the same, it's nine one percentage point wide. Next, engagement in studies, also, industry standards say that if a person, once they have that first appointment, visit service, and they can have two or more within the first 30 days, it increases their overall success engaging in services and having, entering into recovery or wellness. So with that being in place, looking at, again, for the same quarter, the first quarter, excuse me, of this fiscal year, I may have mentioned that earlier, we're at 16.7% on the mental health side, which, again, that's a pretty static number, hadn't went up much since the fourth quarter of last fiscal year. But substance use, it had a significant increase, of 9.96, excuse me, 9.96 percentage points increase for the first quarter. So a significant increase on that one, and we're looking to continue that growth there.
Yes, understanding the stat. I assume that you're talking about with this second set of percentages, folks that didn't get two or more within the first 14 days, but they, they got them within the first 30 days.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Next, looking at care management. This is the services that are provided to help people have those linkages to make sure they're engaging services. These folks tend to have, be very vulnerable, have very high needs, and how we and now, along with our providers, can work to help them make those connections, be able to identify what are some of the issues and barriers they face. We talked, I mentioned social determinants of health, a lot of times transportation, food, what are those barriers that they face, and how to help them to get engaged with their provider. These folks work with them. See the numbers there on the, we have broken down in, here in two groups, the mental health substance use group, you see over 300 members are being served from that. That's based off of March numbers. 136 of intellectual development disabilities, they receive care management also. And that gets into the third bullet point here, the Innovations Waiver. That's, again, we've talked about, I've talked about before, you've asked some great questions about, this is a little different group of people who are received targeted case management, because these folks have received the Innovations, Innovation State Waiver slot. These folks with intellectual disabilities have went through a process of submitting various, a lot of information to be able to identify for these additional funds that kind of go above and beyond what they can receive from Medicaid and/or state dollars for their services. Want to also share, again, that too is a finite number. Right now, we have some, as you see, 775 individuals and families who meet the criteria for Innovations Waiver, and they're just bas- and they're just basically waiting for an innovation slot come available. So with that, we continue to track that. We also offer those families other services that they can have as they wait for innovation waiver slot. Right now, 35% of those folks on that registered unmet needs are receiving other services while they wait for a service slot.
Can I interrupt you again?
Yes, sir.
I think the last time you were here, we talked about the, the new, you know, slots that were available, innovation waiver slots, and at the state, and how slow that process was going in terms of allocating them, and the difficulty of determining who is, when this list has been, it's 16, 17 years, to determine, determine who's next and whatever. That's, that's a serious issue, and I did have, I did have a chance to talk to kind of the, I guess, the assistant secretary who was here at the, you were here at the hearing we hosted with-
Commissioner Kinsley.
Yes, and, and that's a serious problem. I mean, they've got, that's streamlining that process because very few of those slots have been awarded. And like I think I said in back, your last report in December, if I was a state legislator, I'd say, well, I'm not, not too interested in providing more of these slots because they can't seem to get them awarded, and it makes me think the numbers might not be accurate. So do you know how that process is going three months later now? Is that, are we moving along on that?
Yes, we are. We're in a process where, let me, let me back up. We're, yeah, we're continuing to work on that process and get those slots filled. Forsyth County received 39 of them. Some of the challenges that we face, Dr. Martin, thank you, your conversation. We talked after, I think, the last briefing, you had some very poignant questions. One of the things that we do is we follow a certain process that's been identified by the Department of Health and Human Services in filling those slots. We ran into a couple of barriers, and they're not just Partners barriers, or statewide, there's some barriers being faced. First of all, in the typical things, as Dr. Martin says, some folks have been on 15-plus years on this waiver, waiting for a waiver, on registered unmet needs, waiting for a slot. So we have to go sometimes to find these people because phone numbers change, emails change, and what have you, especially if they haven't been engaging in services. What we've also ran into is they may have had a developmental psychological evaluation 10 years ago. Their services they may have received didn't require updated one for whatever reason. So now we have to get them a new evaluation. What we ran into now is something, again, the state is dealing with, is a lack of providers who can provide those evaluations. They're very specific in nature. There's a limited pool of people who are trained to do those, and just like we see across our industry with labor force, we're seeing the same thing in regards to just people who are available to do these evaluations and the time they require. So we're facing those things, and we've shared those with the Department of Health and Human Services along with our peer organizations, and kind of talked about, of ways that, how we can address this because it's really, it's, it's not doing a service to these families that have already been waiting years now for this slot, and we up against this post-COVID thing now where there are not enough providers to do this, this specific one, and we're trying our best to recruit new ones all the time. At the mental health town hall that the county had last month, even one of the, I think, one of the psychologist providers stood up, of course, after I went and asked him and see if he'd be open to it, but again, such a special, he didn't. But this, that's just an example of how we're trying to recruit more and more psychologists to, and providers in general to address this issue. This also plays into direct service.
So the bottom line is, of the 39 new slots we were allocated, how many have we awarded now?
Right now, we have 30, and we're working on the last nine and process-
So we've gotten 30. So back in December, that number was like less than five.
Yeah.
So we make, made a lot of progress.
Made a lot of progress.
Needs to be on the list. You need to talk about it. That's a big, that's a big issue.
So yes, I will add that to the list, yes. We have made progress. But we, we want to get those, all those 39s in place. That's, that's kind of what I'm hoping, looking for.
Thank you for your question.
Next up, a few highlights here, some things, updates for you all regarding what's going on. Again, talked a little bit about Medicaid transformation. As I mentioned, I think our last update, we had heard from, I'm not too sure, can't recall, the Department of Health and Human Services had announced that they had pushed back the implementation date of the Taylor Plan implementation. That's where Partners along with other LME MCOs who've been identified as Taylor Plans or operate a Taylor Plan, we will now not only manage the behavioral health needs of members, Medicaid members, but also the physical health one. We've been excited and gearing up for that. Right now, they pushed that off, the state made that choice, but we're still moving in full throttle to try to have that in place and be well-prepared, and maybe work out some kinks, have a little time here, work out kinks moving forward for that. One thing the department did initiate is on April 1st, they did follow through with North Carolina Medicaid Direct, and that is for Medicare recipients, those who don't qualify, who aren't enrolled in a standard plan, and aren't being served on a Taylor Plan, this is Medicaid to make sure they continue to receive managed behavioral health care in that regard. One thing you see, you see some of the populations here, it's really a period where that we continue to meet that need during that gap period before Taylor Plans go into place. One of the things that we do is we're going to still do the behavioral health side. The physical health side will continue to be managed by Community Care of North Carolina. They've already been doing that for a lot of that population, the physical health side. They'll be in fee-for-service, we'll be in managed care. So it'll be a little difference in the way until we get through this period until later on this year. And I think it's my final slide for you, is talking about, again, how we're engaging in the community. You know, one of the things is trainings, and want to share some trainings, some upcoming trainings that I hope, think you'll be very interested in. From January to March of this year, we have been working, again, in partnership with you all, Forsyth County Behavioral Health Team, to roll out Mental Health First Aid, a national model for training to kind of help regular citizens and regular folk be able to identify someone who's in a mental health, going through a mental health issue, and then try to help them to get to where they need the services.
Could I ask you, could I ask you what certain group you targeted to take this training?
This training, thank you for that. That we've focused on right now, we're targeting, we've already trained some, some of the departments in public health, some county, county departments we've worked in. We've also been working with, I think we just did one with Crisis Control Ministry, and we're working with some of the faith-based groups, are working with them, trying to, to, to have some, we have some meetings set up with two of our very large churches in town, and hopefully, they'll be able to roll this out for them. And because a lot of them work with special populations within their ministries, and so this would be a great way if they identify.
Well, good. I think this is, is such a great program, and I think it's needed more now than ever. So thank you.
It is.
93 is, is a good number.
93 is a good number, but we've got challenge grant, grant, we have a challenge to train over 200, add 200 certified mental health first aiders in Forsyth County, which my numbers from the day, we're at 184. So we're, we're hoping to get to that before the end of fiscal year. Again, we've got several trainings, quite a few lined up for May and in June, so we're, we're hoping to meet that number and not surpass it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question. Next is another training, Question, Persuade, and Refer. It's a suicide prevention model, that's a national model that we've been doing for quite a while now, training on that. And one of the things we've been partnering with, I think I mentioned last time, we're partnering with, once in some, State University, and training some of their staff in this. Of course, they work with students, and the fact that you start to see some populations with the increase in suicide, we see increase in African-Americans that are, that are having suicidal thoughts and actions. So we hope to be able to train, train these folks to be able to identify, ask the right questions, persuade them to get some help, and refer them to someone who can kind of intervene before they act on any type of suicidal thoughts. So we're excited about that one. And that one plays into the final point I'll talk about today is, in partnership with Mental Health Association of Forsyth County and Forsyth County Behavioral Health Department, we're working right now on having a community discussion about suicide. We've slated the date for May 16th. It'll be at the Forsyth County Central Library, 5:45 to 7:30 PM. We're opening this up for a discussion to share, want to talk about suicide. Partners has worked with other organizations to come up with some vignettes, some video vignettes of people who have been touched by suicide. We're going to share those, and we have a licensed clinical professional who will help kind of moderate the discussion. And the goal is to, of course, to try to make awareness on suicide prevention. And the next step is that this will be the first of many in the county to have some of those attendees, which hope some of you would come out and join us, to say, where can we take this conversation further in our community, to other municipalities, to have these discussions? So this is the start of it. We're excited about that and putting, and putting this together. And it's a great kickoff to next month, which is Mental Health Awareness Month. So we feel this is a great way to kind of increase our community's awareness of suicide and ways that we can intervene to, to hopefully thwart off any type of loss of life or any type of injury. And that's my presentation today. I'm happy to entertain or try to answer any questions you may have.
Dr. Martin, I have a question, a question or a comment. Let me process it. It isn't touching to you. Thank you, Mr. Copeland, for your presentation. I am kind of perplexed about a community discussion about suicide. I've been in a lot of discussions, but that one seems to be a bit like, you know, very sensitive, and to try to have it in a public space, I think would, I would be interested to see how it, you know, manifests itself. So I appreciate you all taking on the challenge to have a discussion in the community about suicide. And I know you are aware that, you know, we have had suicides, you know, with our children, and that has, you know, and for anyone, it's bad. But of course, you know, the community realizes that when it touches our children, it becomes that much more concerning and problematic, especially for the public school system. So I was wondering if, I guess, just a question, if there is any consideration of trying to maybe get our counselor, well, get the school district counselors or someone from the school district to be a part of the conversation, and maybe there are some ways to start to have some of these conversations with our students with parent support.
Great question, and I, and I should have mentioned, you're exactly right. These are very sensitive conversations. In training, sometimes certain discussions may trigger certain feelings, certain thoughts. What we've done is we're going, along with having a licensed, I think, licensed clinical social worker who's going to be moderating it, we've also identified other mental health professionals that will be there in the room so that if a person does have concerns, questions, they can come have someone there who'll be able to talk, talk to them, help them process, and then also try, we don't want to, we don't want anyone to feel that totally uncomfortable, but we want to make sure we have things in place. So if they do, we can kind of address that and get them the services, the help that they, they need. But you're exactly right. That's one of the things we built in because that, that was a concern we see in trainings. We try to do that with most of the trainings, and Partners does, is we try to have two trainers just because of the triggering piece in place. And I, and your, I think, your thoughts of with school systems, we're, again, we're opening this up to any organization in the county that want to have these conversations. We'll, we'll bring this to them, and we're partnering with them on support because I agree, you know, many people you can have in the room to help support the people if they're going through, either answer questions, whether they can get information. We're going to have those for this first event, but also those who may need to process some will be there for them. Thank you for your comment question. Very good one. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jack?
As usual, thank you for being here. We'll see you in a quarter. And I have a request for just a quick five-minute recess.
Oh, I hate that. I hate when that happens.
I'll tell you what, Kyle, why don't you go ahead and start?
Okay, I'll go ahead and get going. Good morning, commissioners. So I did want to preface this presentation because I think there was some conversation about maybe a little bit of a different topic today. I know we were going to follow up on the conversation from the winter work session back in February about sites out in the county that could be served by infrastructure and create employment centers. We are still at a staff level working on that, just weren't ready to give that update. You know, as we discussed in February, there's a lot of complications around publicly discussing sites, what that process looks like, acquisition of property. We are still working at a staff level and hopefully we'll have something to bring to you soon about possible strategies around that, but just weren't ready for that today. However, we did have some projects that we did want to bring before you for potential funding opportunities. And I'm going to do a lead-in here, and then Mark Davidson, the airport director, and Andrea Sheets, the workforce and economic development analyst, are going to present a little bit. And then I'll come back and present the last item here. But just as a refresher for the board, the board has set aside $7.5 million in reserve pay-go funds from $1 million in 2020 and $6.5 million in the current year for the purposes of supporting economic development activities. And so we have used that fund before for one project. We used $300,000 to support SG Atkins and the Enterprise Center. They had received, they were applying for an Economic Development Administration grant to expand their shared use kitchen. They were awarded that, and so our part matched that federal grant to allow them to do that. So there is 7.2 million remaining in that fund. And so what we're bringing for you today are some economic development projects that would utilize this fund to further those purposes. In total, they're $4.7 million. And ask here, like I said, $7.2 million in the reserve account. And I'm going to go through just briefly what these projects are, but then I'm going to turn it over to Mark Davidson to go through Smith Reynolds Airport projects. So the first set of projects are at Smith Reynolds Airport. And I did want to just bring up, these are all really about kind of getting sites ready for economic development. If you saw the news this past week, PTI landed a company. They do repairs to planes, about $50 million in investment, 250 new employees over the next little bit here. And really, what was really attractive to them is what they said was having a site that was ready. And so in preparing Smith Reynolds Airport for possible economic development projects, getting sites ready is going to be a priority. So you can see here some of those. Mark's going to go into detail about each of those projects and let you know what those are about. The next item here is what Dr. Spriggs spoke about earlier, the Learn and Earn Apprenticeship Program. So really kind of filling a budget gap. The commissioners, if you recall, as part of our legislative ask, we include some funds for that program. And Andrea Sheets is going to come up here and talk a little bit about what the need is right now. And then the last item, it's a little bit different, and I'll come back up and brief this. This is some urgent repair funds that would go to leverage some Duke Energy funds in the community that there's been some news about recently, too. So I'll go over that. So I'll ask Mark to come up now and go through the Smith Reynolds Airport projects.
Good morning. Exciting hearing Dr. Spriggs talk about Boom visiting Forsyth Tech. There's a little bit of pride in that, that we got that facility up and going, but it's a little sad that they're talking about taking jobs over to PTI. So what I got in front of you today is to keep some of these jobs at Smith Reynolds Airport, create some high-paying jobs. One of the projects is we have an existing tenant. If you remember back in June, Paul Bolton came to you, Piedmont Propulsion, and we actually entered into a new lease. They've been an existing tenant with a 10-year lease with two 10-year options. They have about 53 employees currently. And if you've ever been in the facility, there's a pit at the far end of the building, and it's where the US Air used to do landing gear plating and things like that. And it's this kind of unique space where it's kind of hard to utilize it. For years, Piedmont Propulsion didn't want to really have anything to do with it, but they're growing, and so they've been actually in their lease that we just did, at a reduced rate, they're using it for storage. And the idea here is if we, the county, it's our facility, we own it, they lease a portion of it at a reduced cost, but if we could build the floor up, they're ready to hire some new employees, buy some equipment, totaling about a quarter of a million dollars. I think they can hire about 20 employees. And then we would get additional revenue, the airport would, and rental income. And so it's a win-win for everybody. So if we could utilize some of the money from the Economic Development Fund or the pay-go funds. We have a budget estimate there we got from Piedmont Propulsion of $2 million. Back in 2017, they got some estimates. We're concerned about construction, so it's very conservative on the high end, but that's one of the projects we have listed here. Another site that we own, the county owns, and you've seen it when you drive down North Liberty Street, it's the hangar across on the other side of the airport. And actually, you actually stop with a traffic light and taxi across or be towed across at 3820 North Liberty Street. And so what we're looking at there is we have some existing tenants, but there's additional space that we'd like to prepare for new tenants. And we also, we're utilizing, we've already fixed the roof. We're working on a contract for fixing the hangar doors, but that facility needs a lot more work. It was built in 1958 for Piedmont Airlines, and then they moved to 4001 North Liberty Street. So we have some, the ramps in bad shape, ADA bathrooms, asbestos removal. We're looking at painting and windows and all that kind of stuff inside the facility. But not only will this create economic development for possibly new tenants that could lease about 16,000 square feet, we have existing tenants in there. One of them, Lookup Aviation, is doing really well. I don't know if you know Max Maxwell, minority-run business, doing great. He's actually got into not only the sling aircraft, or bringing them up from South Africa to bring to Winston-Salem, it's a kit airplane, a very expensive kit airplane, but you buy it, and if you put, as the owner, you put in 51% of the work, putting it together, they help you. So it's like a Cirrus aircraft, but it's really, really nice. And there's a picture of it. That's Max's aircraft right there. They're actually, not only doing that, they're getting into flight instruction. And since I've been in front of you, we actually have two more flight instruction businesses at the airport. You know, you have Piedmont Flight Training, but you also have Lookup, who's getting in flight instruction. And I've just learned that ATP is one of the largest in the country. They have a sublease with Signature. I don't know if you've ever heard of ATP, but they are the leader in the United States. They have 82 locations. They've been in business for 35 years, over half a million flight hours. Every year, they turn out 1,161 students to the airlines, get hired. And so they're going to add Smith Reynolds as a location. They have 500 some odd aircraft, but none of them have been based at Smith Reynolds yet. They're trying to work out their fleet, so that's exciting. But like I said, we tripled our existing flight schools at the airport. Another business, Aero Eight, they're sort of like a wholesaler at the airport. So these improvements would help them, as well as the Snack Bar, who's growing really quickly, that Smash Burger, doing well. So we're hoping that we can do these improvements, secure new tenants. I told you about the vacant space, and we're just excited about that. It's also occasionally when we get inquiries from the state about if we're able to handle any businesses just that are starting up, like an EBITOP company, electric vertical takeoff company, this kind of space, because you could actually work in the workshop space and have access to airfield, you have to actually across the street, but something to think about. The third project is, I brought it in front of you before. If you remember Site Four, a portion of Site Four has residential zoning on it. So we're looking at maybe pivoting. If we can't, the city controls our destiny on this, on the Site Four, and so looking at possibly utilizing Site Five. The reason I didn't come up with Site Five first was, well, there's a landfill in the middle of it. About 20 acres, back in the 40s and 50s, they had a landfill at the airport. And so if we can get approval, I've talked to the Department of Environmental Quality, Division of Waste Management, to build upon the site. There's different options. You can remove the debris and everything, and it's very costly because it's 20 acres, it's from zero to 25 feet, too cost prohibitive, but we can possibly build on it. So what I was thinking, this would be like Phase One of utilizing Site Five, do an environmental assessment, about a quarter of a million dollars, a geotechnical evaluation where they would go in and see what the material is in the site. And they might tell us in that geotech that it's just, there's something too hazardous or whatever, and you can't use the site for anything. But we don't know at this time. But if we can get that passed, get past the geotech, environmental assessment, there's one method of bringing in soil, clean soil, off the airport, bring it, put it on the landfill, letting it sit there for a year to settle, and then have compaction rates, and you can build upon it. A lot of landfills are built upon. This way, it doesn't have any zoning issues. We can get through the environmental, because going back to what Kyle said about site-ready, we are behind the curve. So this is an option we could consider.
Can I ask you a couple of questions about that? First of all, on the map that shows those three little property yellow pieces that you got there, which one of those is Site Five?
Site Five is this one right here.
The middle one?
Yep. It's right in the middle of our two runways. It's about 30 acres, the whole Site Five that we designated, but 20 of it is that landfill. And the idea is if we did do that landfill, what you could build on it, it's not necessarily a building, you could at one point, but we also have to worry about our approach surfaces around the runway. So you can't, you don't want to build a building right next to the runway. So what we were looking at was possibly a taxiway stubout, a ramp that would handle light aircraft, like the electric vertical aircraft that I talked about, because it's very compatible, we're very close to the neighbors, it's quiet technology. And so that's what I was thinking about for Site Five, having a ramp that, you know, not a lot of weight would be on it. We don't want to park 737s or anything like that over there.
Well, would not another acceptable use of, instead of this soil settlement deal, if you did build it, can't you put, I mean, pretty standard vapor barriers underneath it? And that usually takes care of any kind of, you know, ground emissions and whatever else. It's just that the initial construction, you put in a vapor barrier on the foundation.
That is an option as well.
And I would think that would, and it's a whole lot cheaper than 1.2 million to do a...
Well, this is also about the elevation of the site. It's pretty low.
Well, then that's a different issue.
Yeah.
But you could also work on the elevation part and not have to let it sit for a year. You could get, you can do...
I'm open. I'm open to it.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's some, but obviously you need to find out what's there and what the issue is. And I think that part makes a lot of sense. I'm not so sure what you do, the other parts after that, but...
Okay.
Mark, on that, when, if you were to attempt to do something like that, they would do, or I would think, test borings to determine, one thing, of how decomposed whatever was put there as far as any kind of contamination, I'd say it's probably little, but that putting dirt on top of something like that and think that's going to make it compacted, now I don't want to see that. I just don't. Let me know before you get ready to do that.
Now, I am not an expert on landfills. I've never dealt with landfill before, but the engineer was telling me this is a possible option that you can do, is that you do the environmental, the geotech, to find out what's below. And then, once you find that we get permission to build upon the site, this is one method, is you bring in the dirt, and over time, it settles, and then you get compaction. You know, you then go back and compact it. I am open to any, I am not an expert on landfills. I don't know what I'm doing here, so I'm open to suggestions.
Just don't do it before you get a whole lot of information.
Yeah.
I'd like to say that I think we need to know what's there. And what we could do with the site.
I agree.
And both assessments make a lot of sense to me.
Yep. And we do know the, back in 2016, 15, the Department of Environmental Quality came out and actually did a bunch of borings to find the limits of the landfill. It was just sort of out there, and so they went and found the limits of it. And then we did a notice of, you know, whatever it is, that you figure out the land, and then we put a fence around it so nobody could get to the site. So it is there at the airport now with a fence around it, secure. We do know the limits of it. And so they said, this was some of the options that they gave me as well about moving forward. Moving the whole landfill was not, I don't even want to say the number in here, it was crazy high. I'm open to suggestions, completely. I want to get off that slide. Let's go. Demolition of facilities in south ramp preparation. This is another, we own these facilities. This is at the airport on the south next to, oh, what happened? I didn't know. Okay. We own these facilities. Talked to Kirby, it appears that the sheriff is possibly looking at moving the impound lot. It's a really, I hate to say, but it's an eyesore when you're coming up to the new Maisy S Woodruff Aviation Technology Lab. You make that turn, and you see that old impound lot. And then I put agriculture building, I meant to put animal site, but back in the, back behind the impound lot, there's a lot as well. We'd like to demolish those facilities when they find a new home. And then start looking at possibly helicopters, the electric vertical takeoff again, general aviation aircraft, using that, taxiing down off the south ramp. So this is just one of the first phases, and that's demolition of some existing buildings the county owns that have aged and have done their useful life, so.
Just say it again, you're not talking about demolishing the corporate extension building. Thank you very much.
I thought it was an ag, I thought it was an ag building behind there. It's actually animal, I guess it used to be old.
Yeah, there is an old, actually, it's just a barn now that we keep animal, the non-domestic, you know, cats and dogs. There's, if you get a goat or a pig or a horse, it lands back there, and then it's our lot for...
Look at the red arrow, don't look at the words.
The manager knew what I was thinking. I was just getting ready to ask the question. I needed some more glasses.
Sorry.
It hadn't been but...
All right, let's get off this slide, too.
20 years or less since we've put the addition on. I don't know what I'm going to have to do. I'm going to have to start checking more on things, hire somebody to help me check on it.
All right. Andrew? Just total those projects, Mark, off the top of your head.
4.4 million.
Okay.
How much?
4.4.
1.4.
How about the total for everything he's put on here?
4.7.
Sorry, I thought he asked for the airport, 4.4.
What's your total for all the projects?
I have a summary slide at the very end, it's going to have every single project on it, it's been...
Okay.
All right, morning. So Dr. Spriggs introduced it earlier, but this ask is about Forsyth Tech's Learn and Earn Apprenticeship Program. Danielle and Alan in the back are the primary staff members from their team supporting that. And you've heard about it a little bit with legislative ask, but as a refresher, it is Forsyth Tech's Adult Work-Based Learning Program. When we say adult, that really means over the age of 18. The majority of their participants are students out of high school who are not going on to a 10- to four-year college. But the current class spans ages 18 to 58. But the current class spans ages 18 to 58. It is also a tool that adult workers use to reskill or upskill. In the last four years, in 2019, the program started and they've grown from 13 to 50 apprentices that is projected to reach 62 over the next couple of years. So very quickly going program. And one of the key parts of LEAP is the debt-free status, and that, as Dr. Swirke mentioned a bit earlier, the employers pay the students while they are working and in class, and that is a market rate wage. It usually wages, or ranges about $15 to $20 an hour, depending on the employer and the sector. And so because that student typically has their tuition covered and they're earning, it is a very powerful tool for economic mobility, just because students are not incurring the cost of their training and are able to earn that wage and build up that way. And also, there's an element of this program that really meets students where they are in terms of soft skills, professionalism, kind of industry, what standard tasks, like blueprint reading. Danielle and her team do a really good job of getting these students ready for these careers. There are over 50 employer partners across most major sectors in the county, manufacturing, healthcare, transportation. They include many of the county's largest employers. This is a very powerful tool in economic recruitment and retention. It's something that, as companies are looking here, we talk about as kind of on the menu of Forsyth Tech's options, and many of our employers are very intrigued by it. Couple of recent announcements, there are already talks for Forsyth Tech about this specific program. And so it really is a win-win for everybody. It develops a workforce pipeline for our companies within our target sectors, and also provides students with training and an employer at the end of that. And so 110,000 will sustain the program ahead of the Requested Sea Expansion Funds. That 1.9 million will really take this program to the next level if we receive it. And Forsyth Tech also has a few other public and private funding options on the horizon that, as Dr. Swirke said, they expect to get, or at least partially get. However, this funding really kind of gets us to that point where they will receive those funds and can then expand. It's really kind of a stabilizing force. So, you know, right now, because those aren't for certain yet, students and employers are all kind of just waiting what's going to happen. This is a student's financial situation possibly, and the employers are a little, you know, if they were to find out all the turbulence, it would be just in jeopardy. And so we really, it's for the best of the program if we just kind of stabilize it until we get to that point. So if you have any questions, please feel free and Danielle, I'm sure, could add as well.
Got one quick one. So how long does 110,000 dollars last? Well, how long is that bridge?
So right now, this, we calculated this number through insuring the students who are currently enrolled and will start in the summer. However, if some of those funding sources come through, so, I'm sorry, that is about two years of, it ensures that if no funding on the horizon is made those promises, the students who are already in the program, that status will be insured. And so after, if none of that comes through, it'll be Forsyth Tech decision on what to do. But this secures that at the minimum, and then if that funding does come through, we found that a lot of the state funding and other private sources can be used for some programs or not others, or for students who meet some certain demographics and not others. And so this, if that funding does come through in those cases, this could be used to kind of fill in those gaps, but also meant to stabilize the program for a minimum two years.
Okay. Any other questions?
This is a great program. I remember when, the first year it was started, and I also remember going to the first graduation, and I'm so pleased at how it's expanded. This is an outstanding program. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
And I will, I'll go over the last request here, and as I said, this is more of a non-traditional economic development request here, but it is an opportunity that is before us that we wanted to bring to you. You may have read in the paper, Duke Energy has just announced their High Energy Usage Assistance Program that was approved by the State Utility Commission. It's actually a total of $8 million to go towards helping low-income households with energy efficiency improvements. Of that, it's a pilot right now, a two-year pilot, 4 million's allocated to Mecklenburg County, Charlotte, 2 million to Guilford, and 2 million to Forsyth County. And their goal is to assist 250 homes over that two-year period by replacing heating, ventilation, AC, water heaters and fixtures, sealing air leaks, installing insulation LED lights, and replacing old refrigerators, so things that would reduce their energy costs. And so they're going through their data and seeing which households are high energy usage, and they have an indicator of that. And then from those, if they qualify, if they're 200% below the federal poverty line, they would qualify for this assistance.
That's 250 in Forsyth County.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. 250 in Forsyth County, 250 in Guilford, and 500 in Mecklenburg. And so one of the other barriers for them is if these households have certain health and safety issues that would prevent them from completing this work, they're unable to work on those houses. And so that's really a natural fit with the Housing Rehabilitation Program that our department has. And so we've been, had conversations about, with them, about them referring folks to us, we're referring folks to them. But they did estimate that about 40% of the qualifying households would have some sort of health and safety issue that would limit them from being able to do the energy efficiency. So what our program can do is, you know, we can replace damaged doors and windows or do a roof replacement fairly quickly with our urgent repair funds. As the commissioners may remember, we didn't, we usually get an urgent repair allocation from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. We were not awarded last year. The board did step in and provide some American Rescue Plan Acts to tie us over. We've already allocated all of those funds to projects, already identified those 10 projects. We're expecting, we did apply for and are expecting to get some additional funding through the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. We hope to hear pretty soon for this year's grant process. However, with that number of households that they're looking to do over a two-year period, there is the need, there could, a possible need for additional health and safety funding. So right now, the current sources of funds we have through the federal government, most of them require us to bring the entire house to code. So if you imagine that, that's generally two, three, four-month process to get through. That urgent repair, where we can just go in and fix a roof, is a much quicker process, which allows Duke Energy to get in there quicker, to do their repairs. And so what we were asking for is really 190,000 dollars to pair with North Carolina Housing Finance Agency Urgent Repair Funds, if we receive it, to do more of those urgent repairs in partnership with Duke, so that we can leverage those funds, we can make that quick roof repair, windows, whatever it is that we need to do, so they can get in and make those energy efficiency improvements to that household. And then possibly, we could go back and use our other funds to bring any other issues that aren't preventing Duke Energy, bring the house up to code. But this would really allow us to maximize that Duke Energy money in the community.
Basically, it'll let you make more home, they're going to pass over something if there's a life safety issue, and they're not going to treat that home. So this is a way to make more folks eligible. And if you think about it, I bet you the ones who have the life safety issues are the folks that really need the help the most, I would imagine. So it's a kind of a bridge type thing, yeah.
Unless they, if they haven't already identified those 250 houses, there's no way that's going to get done in two years.
It is ambitious. It is certainly ambitious. And, you know, we've been sharing our data as far as the houses that we've done repairs on, where we may have not done any energy efficiency repairs, but we've fixed some health and safety with them so that they can reach out to them and see if there are energy repairs. So that's kind of the starting point, but certainly 250 houses in a two-year period is a lot, but, you know, we do want to support them however we can.
Okay. Thank you very much. I mean, yes, it's a good program. And I applaud Duke for moving in that direction.
So like I said, I did have a summary slide here, so this includes all of the different funding requests that we went through here. Like I said, it's a total of 4.7 million, just really seeking guidance from the board. We can, if the board is in favor of these, we can bring the appropriate items to the board going forward to allocate that funding. And so just really kind of looking for direction from the board.
I had one question, kind of more in the Mark category, in that very first one, on that very, the 4400 Lansing Drive, the floor for 2 million. I just got my calculator out, it's 143 dollars a square foot, just for the floor. And I realize it's a buildup, it's in a pit, it's constructing the floor again, certainly substantial, but 143 dollars a square foot is like, pretty outrageous, I think.
That was the number we got from PMOT Propulsion. I think we could do, come in lower. The thing is that it's about a three-foot drop, and I think you have to, you can't just build upon the existing structure. I think you have to build up the pylons and then...
Yeah, you got to put some piers in, come back and do it.
So we, the county, has not got a cost estimate. And that would be the first thing, if we get direction from this board, to move forward, you know, look into it. That's one of the first things we'll do, is we'll get some cost estimates from contractors.
And just on the amount of money, the 800,000 seems low for this, for the second project. But then, I haven't been in the building, I'm not looking, but just looking at the pictures and knowing what I think the condition of that is, that seems like a cheaper one. But it's great if it is, I'm just, I know nothing about it, it just seemed low.
It's just a portion of the many things we're doing at that building. I'd like more, but we've already allocated some, but yeah.
That's good. I'm like a Commissioner Limmel, I believe I need a tour of the airport and some of these properties, because I'm pretty naive about that, maybe, maybe, maybe...
Love to have you.
Maybe a field trip of those who would be interested to just put eyes on some of these projects.
Sounds good.
Might be of great interest.
Fresh eyes would be great.
Already got one idea about your landfill, and I'll let you know about it later.
All right. I'm open.
All right. Thank you very much, Kyle. It's good. And thank you, Mark. All righty. We're running a little tight on time, because someone's got an invitation to go to a lunch thing today, but we will have Aisha, I think is here, and can give us a quick review of the American Rescue Plan Act, kind of the progress report to date.
Good morning, county commissioners.
Hey.
Aisha is very efficient. She is amazing. She takes us through a Wednesday meeting, and we always get out quick, so she'll be good.
Thank you. Aisha Carter here to do an ARPA update, and I have Kimberly Shore, Compliance Manager, right behind me, if I do have questions in regards to compliance. I'll start first with the status of round one sub recipients. There were 34 awarded projects. We have 26 fully executed, two in contract control, two negotiating contracts, and the four that you are aware of that withdrew. For round two, we have 21 fully executed agreements, six in contract control, two to be presented during the May 4 meeting, three negotiating contracts, and then one newly withdrew. The amount was 25,000. They withdrew April 5, and the reason was small staff, not enough resources to commit to the monthly reporting and monitoring.
Was delicious by Shereen, actually, withdrew.
Oh, yeah, I remember that.
It's kind of too bad.
The next slide is funds dispersed. This is through March 2023. We dispersed 46.08% of funds awarded in round one. Dispersed 22.22% of funds are awarded in round two, and the total funds dispersed to So Sunday, April 30, the federal project and expenditure report is due, and we do have our compliance manager wrapping that up, and I believe that report will be available to you guys sometime in the next week or so.
Any questions for Aisha? You're right, she was efficient.
One more thing.
Oh, you're not finished?
One more thing.
This is the best part. The best part is right now.
I was getting to efficient, so, here we go.
So with the help of MIS, we were able to create an interactive storyboard detailing how the 74 million dollars in ARPA funds were allocated and approved. The storyboard includes a dashboard summarizing each approved project, graphs showing allocations by category, outreach efforts, as well as the percent of funds to disproportionately impacted communities. In addition, the storyboard includes a map displaying ARPA projects by county commissioner districts and qualified census tracts, and this storyboard is now available on the webpage. Have four different tabs here. I'll quickly run through this. On the left-hand, on the left-hand column, you have all the cases, and you can filter these cases by case name, category, and round. The middle column here is bits numbers, so the number of approved requests, the total amount of ARPA funding, the 74 million, and a breakout of how all that funding fell out. If you actually click on one of these cases, and I'm going to go with the Children's Health, Children's Home Society, if you click on it, then the summary will pop up down below with the amount requested. And then the third column actually shows four different graphs. And I briefly go over those right quick. One of them is the percent of ARPA funds allocated by category, netting out premium pay, administrative costs, and revenue costs. The next one is the same information, but just showing it by cost and that percent. Next one is the percent of ARPA funds to disproportionately impacted communities, and then some outreach efforts. Then the last thing I'm going to show is the map. So this is a map of all of the ARPA projects by district, purple being District A, and green being District B, and then the shaded area is qualified census tracts. And if you actually click on one of the blue dots, it'll tell you the case project as well as the amount. And that is available on the webpage. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Oh, I have some comments. Chairman, if I may.
Please.
Thank you so very much, Aisha. When I tell you, you have come a long ways, baby, and I so, I don't mean the condemnation of baby, but anyways, this is a incredible, sensational report, and thank you so very much for the graphs, the data, all of the alignment. It is absolutely perfect. One of the things that I would like to know is where can I find this?
It's going to be on the Forsyth County webpage. If you go to ARPA, it's going to be a link that says Dashboard or Storyboard. Click on that, and this will pop up.
Perfect, perfect.
You can click on the blue dots and get the info on the particular dot.
Yes.
It's totally interactive, and I believe it will be an award-winning...
It is.
Thing. So we submitted it off to get some kudos on it.
This is just what I was looking for, so thank you so very much. Reporting should look, in my opinion, reporting should look like this in all facets.
This was a partnership with Aisha and staff, and MIS staff, and Matt Forsyth, who knows how to tell that story with data, and so we've got a lot of storyboards, but I agree, it's, this... Thanks for pushing it, because frankly, it made us really think through it, so...
Thank you so very much again.
Thank you.
Perfect.
If you guys would like a breakdown of the percentages, I can...
Thank you. Aisha, I thank you also, but I'm looking forward to a report in maybe two years to see, and it will answer a question, if money truly does solve our problems. So I'm anxious to say the results.
All right. Looking forward to presenting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Both efficient and impressive, so thank you. All righty. Our last item is the capital construction update presentation, and James Anderson is
James is always also super efficient, so he's fantastic. If he can get his technology working, he's super efficient.
Ashley, which presentation is mine on here?
Good afternoon now, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Appreciate your time this morning. I'll be brief with our update on our construction projects. What did I do? I hit, Ashley, I hit the wrong button here, I think, because I can't see the presentation or...
It'd be right arrow. Does right arrow work?
So a quick update on our capital improvement projects. We currently have 14 projects that are in the planning, design, or construction phase with budgets ranging from 450,000 to 106 million dollars. Total budget of all CIP projects right now is about 214 million. This is just a overview of the timeline for our projects that we've got in either construction or planning or design. As you can see, we've got several that are going to be finishing up this year or early 2024. This slide does a blow up on those, so you can see a little bit closer detail of where we are with those individual projects and their estimated times for hitting construction, completing construction, and then our move-in and occupancy phases. And so for our four projects that we have currently in construction, that's the new courthouse with the 106 million dollar budget and a estimated completion date of June of this year. And then we have the Collidium project with a 30.5 million dollar budget with substantial completion estimated for November of this year. And then Blues Lake Park with a 6.7 million dollar budget for the first phase. And then we do anticipate that first phase wrapping up actually quite a bit early in October of this year. And then out at the airport, the new hangar project with a 10.3 million dollar budget will be wrapping up in July of this year.
We know we haven't done the, the, the groundbreaking at Blues Lake, and we're getting finished pretty quickly. We pushed the groundbreaking off, so we're going to have, we're going to break ground with a lot of work being, already being done, but, but, yeah.
So over at the new courthouse, this is actually a picture I took of the lobby on Friday. You can see we've got a good bit of the interior finishes are complete now, and my staff is actually working with the design team and the contractor this morning to do punch list on the second floor. So we are continuing that punch list process throughout the building, and then we do anticipate that being turned over to us in mid-June, and then start stocking the building with furniture, and then looking forward to a move-in. We're looking at the judge's conference weekend in October, so we'll be doing some moving the week before, the week of, and then the week after. And things are going really well so far with E2PM on, on doing, excuse me, StanTech now doing the move management. And then over at Collidium, the notice proceed for the construction of the new building was issued as September 7th, 2021, and then some milestone dates. We did complete deep foundations in January of 2022, and then we held a topping out celebration this past August. And then we are anticipating Bloom turning the project over to us in November of 2023, and then that gives Collidium time to begin again, bringing in their exhibits, and they anticipate the museum opening shortly after the New Year. Then up at Blues Lake Park, construction commenced on site February 6th of this year. They've completed all of the clearing and grubbing now down to the water, and they are complete with actually upgraded and fine graded the roadway in about halfway in, and have begun installation of the stone roadbed there. And then we are expecting substantial completion, as I said, earlier than anticipated in October of this year. Bar Construction is doing a fantastic job, hit the ground running for this project, and they're looking to wrap it up actually about six months ahead of schedule. And then out at the airport for the corporate hangar project, the erection of CH1 and CH2 has been completed, and Shellco is working to wrap up site work now and anticipates turning the project over to us in July.
Good question on that project. Does the, remember all the drain issue we had that went down to the, that needs to be fixed, to be, rebid that, and where is that project?
So I've been working with Stimel and the other designers to get fees down underneath the mini brooks limit, so that I can get a contract in place to have them do the design work. So finally, I've reached a point with them that we've got that ready to go, so we'll be getting that design started. In the meantime, Mark Davidson has one ahead and combed off that center section of the parking lot as a safety precaution.
Good.
And then a quick update on our capital renewal project. So we do have 29 facilities that we maintain, and we track those in capital forecast, and the average age of our facilities since new or the last major renovation is about 33 years old. In our current year, we have 17.5 million dollars in deferred and scheduled renewal needs, and over the 10-year period, we have roughly 27.7 million dollars of scheduled and deferred needs. And our current funding model is we receive $2 million biannually, and assuming that we continue at this current funding model, we're going to have roughly a 15.4 million dollar deficit over the next 10 years.
Include the buildings that we're going to take out of service like Current Hall of Justice, Current Collidium, those buildings would both be scheduled to be sold?
So those are not included.
They are not included in the, okay, all right, okay.
And then, so we do have some challenges with our capital renewal program. The current data set that we have, when we had EMG come in and do the facility assessment a number of years ago, it did not include soft items such as carpet, paint, and other interior finishes, so those are not captured in there. And then we also have been seeing here lately unprecedented cost escalation due to labor and material shortages. So that 27.7 million dollars over the next 10 years is probably more realistically on the upper end of anywhere from 35 to 40 million dollars when you count for inflation. Yeah, it's, the construction market's gone absolutely insane in some things. There were things that, you know, a couple of years ago, we'd have paid 150 dollars a square foot for them. Today, they're 300 dollars a square foot for that same construction type. And then the other thing.
I was going to say, strategy-wise, obviously, there's a big gap, so you'll start seeing some of those come up in recommended pay-go set-asides and things like that, so there'll be, we do have a model for that.
And then also, the law enforcement detention center continues to be a strain on the budget. It has large needs, and due to the critical nature of that facility, tends to rank higher on the priority list than other county facilities when those needs are, are due. And so over the last years at the jail, we've completed approximately 6.2 million dollars in projects. Some of the notable projects is roof replacement, cooling towers, the shower floor and wall project, kitchen renovation, and then also replace the chillers. And then we do have currently, in the current year, 6.6 million dollars of needs identified for the LEDC, and then over the next two to 10 years, approximately 3.3 million additional dollars in projects, and then over the next 10 years, roughly 10 million dollars that needs to be put into the LEDC. And that's it, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Yeah, the only thing we do have, I do have Chris Weevil is going to be here, he's got, he's got just a few projects to show you that are more park-centric projects, but wanted a quick review of those, but if you've got any questions for James, I'm sorry.
Okay. Now, any questions for James?
Thank you, James.
Thank you. He's a busy, busy man. And I think he's going to use the Elmo, just to put some stuff up on the Elmo.
Good afternoon, it is good afternoon. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I may not be quite as efficient, yes, I'm good. May not be quite as efficient as my previous two colleagues, but to be effective. I'm going to talk about three projects today that we have that will be upcoming in our two-thirds, two-thirds bond by annual allocation. The first one is the Tanglewood Multi-Use Trail. This is, will be Phase Four of the trail. We have allocated about 750 million dollars for this project. The slide that you're seeing right now is just basically an overview of Phase Two and Three. If you can see in the very lower right-hand corner, the little gray spot there, that is the Phase Four that we're planning. What that will do, it will give us a complete loop around the one-way road of Tanglewood. That will give us a complete 3.9 miles of 10-foot wide paved multi-use trail at Tanglewood. And just a few numbers for the trail at Tanglewood. We looked, we've got some trail counters, people, people counters, so to speak. Over 2021, 2022, we had an average of 25,000 users over those two years. Average is about 800 to 900 persons a day. So that's just a, that's just a good number for that.
I heard you correctly when you said 750 million dollars?
I hope thousand.
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 I thought that's one hell of a trail.
Yeah, that's going to be a big trail. Link all our parks together there.
It's a trail to the moon.
This is a blow up of the actual project site. The majority of the work, if you're familiar with Tanglewood, the road goes from two lanes down to one ra, one lane at our maintenance, near our maintenance facility. The one, one-lane road is a lot of walkers, a lot of joggers, a lot of bikers, a lot of vehicles. That is sort of a safety hazard, and one of our, our plan is, is to take that one-way road and use, it's basically a half a mile long from where we start to the man, back to the manor house, we use that as our trail. We'll use that as our trail, be able to block that section off for daytime use, we'll be able to open that section back up for the festival lights at nighttime use. So it's going to be a multi, multi, multi-use trail at that particular section, but we're, we're going to increase our road width to two lanes down to the Skill Pot area, create ourselves a cul-de-sac where folks can get in and out to the BMX, to Shelter 3, and from Skill Pot Lake all the way back to the manor house will be basically walking path. I've got a few pictures here. These were actually taken this morning. This shows the double, W yellow line you see, that is the end of the one, of the two-way section of roadway. To the left is our maintenance facility. Over here, just to the right, you can see basically the end of Phase Three of the trail. If you were closer, the, the trail and the road basically look about, they are just about the same width, so it's going to work out very good once we get down to Skill Pot utilizing that. Just kind of showing you some of the natural, very pretty section of the park, you can kind of see that is the one-way road as you, you head to the north. This is, on the left is the, as you come out of the woods on the one-way road down to the, basically the flood plain there along the river. And then the photo on the right is section, in the very background, you see the end of one-way road as it comes back into the Tanglewood Park Main Road. We currently have a spur that jumped across the main road and leads to one-way road, and that was kind of in the, the original plan. Benefit of what we've got is the Phase Four has already been designed, so we've got that kind of there, we'll have to tweak it a little bit to get it back to today's standards. Right, but this is just a shot of, this is Phase Two of the multi-use trail, just kind of letting you see kind of what it would look like. This is what we envisioned the Phase Four to look like along one-way road. This is as you go up to the manor house, and the photo on the left there is in front of the manor house. Our next project is one that we've talked about for several years. We currently have two 18-hole disc golf courses in the department, one at Horizons, which is the oldest disc golf course, hopefully in the, in the state. And at Triad, we have the second longest disc golf courts, course in the state. We would like to have a 18-hole golf course, a disc golf course at Tanglewood. And the slide that you're looking at here is basically the proposed area that we'd like to do or look at having the disc golf course. It's a totally wooded site, and it's directly across to the east from the pool area. It's about a 22, 23 and a half acre site. You need about 18 acres for a good 18-hole disc golf course. Most of the folks that we hear from, they want a challenging course, and those challenging courses are, are nine times out of 10, through a wooded area such as the one that we've chosen here. Don't have any construction going on in that, but I'll kind of show you a few renditions of what we've got currently in place. The left-hand shot is one of our locations at Horizons. Right-hand just showing you one of the par three, or one of the tee signs that we've got for a par three at Horizons. And the last one I've got here shows you a couple, couple pictures of the course at Triad Park. You see, it's more of a wooded course, kind of goes through the woods, we have several open holes as well into the fields, have concreted tee pads, both long and short tees, and we have commercial baskets at each hole. Final project we should bring to you today is at Joni Moser Park. Currently, we are under construction with the nine-ball pickleball, pickleball court facility. We're about a third of the way through construction there. As part of the construction of that site, and you can see it here on the, kind of the lower right-hand corner, the back portion of this site is half-court basketball. What we've done for the pickleball, we've basically squared this whole area off to create our nine pickleball courts. That did remove the half-court basketball court, and with this project, what we're asking to do is rebuild a half, half-court basketball court in another location. Location we've chosen is roughly in this area, just to the northeast of the ball field that's currently there. The shot on the left kind of shows you just an overview of the tennis court. The basketball court is here to your left. The section of grass that you can see there now is paved, getting ready for our pickleball courts to go in.
There are some upset folks out there over losing that basketball.
I've talked to several.
But they feel better, the ones I talked to, they were, they felt better as going to get replaced.
Yes, and that's, that's what we're, that's our intent. Just kind of showing you again what we've got here, here's the half-court. Again, the section of grass here on the right, that, that is, you know, we filled that area in with pavement. We're going to go back and like I say, that'll be an additional court there, and you can see the court in the background. A lot of folks liked this spot, it's kind of not secluded, but it was out of the way, you know, you weren't out in the sun, it was a little bit of shade, so they, they really liked this particular spot.
So when will that be ready, the basketball?
Whenever our funding comes in, I think that's sometime in July, so we can at least start the processes of all that. We've got about $200,000 allocated for this particular project, so that's, that's what we're looking at. I don't know exactly past that, once we go through there, but that's just kind of a final shot, just the overview of the site, so. Any questions? I can hopefully.
Any questions?
Three?
That's good, thanks for the update. Good, we're done.
Yeah.
We'll take a break, we'll be back 2 o'clock.